All right, good evening, East Hampton Town Board. You are live on 22. We're streaming on YouTube. Phone lines are open. You are being recorded, and you may begin your meeting.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate your assistance tonight. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board meeting of Thursday, December 5, 2024. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
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 President. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we have two public hearings. The first is the John Osborne Homestead Historic Landmark, and that public hearing will be introduced by Hillary Osborne Malecki and Scott Wilson. And then we have, our second hearing is to amend Chapter 45, Ordinance Enforcement Department, and Chapter 255 zoning. That'll be followed by a public portion, and then we will do resolutions. So Carol, if you could please read the, and I just want to say Hugh King is not here tonight. He had let us know at the last meeting that he has a previous engagement at the East Hampton Library, but he'll be joining us on December 19. Okay, Carol, cue you with the reading of the meeting notices, please.
The public hearings will be held live and in person by the town board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for livestream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person, but may also provide comments on the matter by being heard by calling 351-888-6331. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person by agent, by attorney, or by teleconference to the live meeting, or by written correspondence addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Pinnacle Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the Town Clerk by email to cbrannon@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the Town Clerk by the date and time of the public hearings. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes and for updated information. Take notice that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York on Thursday, December 5, 6:00 p.m., in the main meeting room, Town Hall, 159 Pinnacle Road, East Hampton, or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard regarding the local law amending 255 zoning of the East Hampton Town Code at Article 12, Use District Zoning Map, and Article 13, Table of Historic Landmarks and Historic Districts, in order to designate certain lands and structures located at 66 Wayne Scott Main Street as the John Osborne Homestead Historic Landmark, which property is now in contract with the Town of East Hampton and being described on the Suffolk County Tax Map as 300, 200, 229.
Great. Thank you, Carol. Scott, you want to start?
Yeah, just very briefly, and I'm glad and happy to introduce Hillary here. So as discussed at the last public hearing to acquire, I mentioned to everyone that there would be a second public hearing, and that was because at that time, we hadn't had our assessment, and now we have it. It was completed on November 18 by Zachary Student Roth, Architectural Consultant and Stewart Preservation Services. And there was a number of people who spoke at the hearing to acquire, discuss the importance of the Osborne family, the property, this property in particular, as well as the 1904 Louisa Edwards House in the 17th century barn, which I believe I mentioned was built in 1915. Shame on me. Fortunately, Hillary is here to talk about that further, and as pointed out in the assessment from Zachary, that that date was woefully inaccurate, my mistake. And so we have a resident expert here, Hillary, who has this wonderful slideshow presentation for us, which I'm looking forward to seeing and hearing.
Welcome, Hillary. Thanks for joining us again.
I wanted to thank the Town Board. First, I'm going to briefly speak about the history of the Osborne farmhouse and the Osborne barn. And I would like to thank again the Town Board and Ronald Lorder for making this preservation of this property possible. The stars have aligned, and I think there was only one chance to grab it, and it's wonderful that they were grabbed.
I believe, you know, we close next week. Isn't that correct, Scott?
Correct.
Wonderful news. So how did the farmhouse come to be? Louisa Edwards Osborne, who was barely five feet tall, is pictured here with three of her daughters. She lived in this salt box for 29 years, raising six children. By the 1900s, she realized it was time for a change. The salt box was, after all, 275 years old. It was a bold decision for a 53-year-old widow to build a new home in the early 1900s. Her granddaughter, Amy Hunter, wrote Louisa was aware the New York City folk were discovering the seaside charms of Wayne Scott. She decided to start a boarding house. Louisa's son, Thomas, was a civil engineer who designed the boarding house plans. The house had two dining rooms, a small one for family and a large one for the boarders, a sitting room and a parlor. The small downstairs bedroom served as a refuge for Louisa from the upstairs boarders. When originally built, the house had two kitchens, a summer kitchen and a winter kitchen. The summer kitchen with its single-story design would keep the heat generated from cooking from rising up into the main home. Louisa's granddaughter wrote, "With the older children gone, Louisa depended on her two youngest daughters, Amy and Mary, pictured here, to help with the boarders. They assisted in preparing meals, waiting on tables, cleaning, sweating over the hand-cranked washing machine set up in the side yard, and feeding the laundry through wooden ringers. They ironed with heavy irons heated on a wood stove and cleaned and filled the despised kerosene lamps." This is a photo of the large dining room in the farmhouse where the boarders were served meals. On the wall were built-in pie cupboards. The large farmhouse has two staircases, the front one used by the boarders, a small back staircase used by the family. The second floor had six bedrooms and the house's only bathroom. This is a photo of an upstairs bedroom. Louisa's granddaughter wrote, "The guests had their own choice of rooms and would sometimes move from room to room as they wished, doubling the work for the family." Two boarders had a big impact on Louisa's daughters. Anne Moore, a pioneering children's librarian from the New York Public Library, was instrumental in enrolling Amy and Mary Osborne in a professional librarian's course. Amy retired as head librarian of the East Hampton Library's Long Island Collection, and Mary became the founder of the Towson, Maryland library system. Another important boarder was attorney Charles Bassford. He became Amy's husband. The attic is reached beyond a door by climbing a full-size staircase. The attic holds this large metal galvanized cistern. It was positioned directly over the second-floor bathroom. A small gasoline engine in the basement would be fired up to pump water to the attic when needed. The water would then flow by gravity to supply the second-floor bathroom and the first-floor kitchen. Reportedly, the young children of the house, when bored, would sneak up in the attic to float boats in the cistern. A little-known fact, the farmhouse served as the Wayne Scott Library for seven years, from 1918 to 1925. Louisa agreed to hold the books as the windmills' condition was deteriorating. In 1925, the books were removed to new bookcases built for the purpose in the Wayne Scott Chapel, where they remain today. After Louisa's death, the farmhouse was sold to her nephew Raymond Osborne in 1927. Two weeks later, Raymond married Augusta Holsey of Meacocks. Raymond and Augusta would wire the house with electricity and remove the summer kitchen. Heating was provided from a boiler in the basement that fed radiators throughout the house. Eventually, the first-floor back dining room and bedroom were turned into a large office with a cork floor from which Raymond and his two sons, Charles and David, ran their potato farming and distribution business. In their older years, they added a bathroom to the first floor. They would live here in the farmhouse, raising three children and potatoes overlooking Wayne Scott Pond for the next 58 years. The sitting room seen here for a family portrait in 1947 had large sliding pocket doors, a large single fireplace, built-in bookcases, and a window seat. This is a view of the house with potatoes growing on the backfield. The large driveway was at one time covered in broken clamshells. As a child, on arriving, about 30 farm cats would come out of hiding to greet you. My grandfather enjoyed caring for apple and pear trees he planted around the house. My grandparents also took in boarders. One boarder was a Western cowboy and artist, Jack Van Ryder. In 1936, he won the Guildhall Prize. There is a museum dedicated to his work in Arizona. Van Ryder's wife, Marjorie Swain, a sculptor, was a regular summer boarder at the Osborne farmhouse. Mrs. Van Ryder had a whole table full of exotic perfumes and potions in the family's only bathroom. She left a lasting impression on my Aunt Ruth, a young girl at the time. She never forgot waiting and waiting for Mrs. Van Ryder to finish with her makeup and free up the bathroom. Louisa Osborne started a trend in farmhouse construction. Her daughter Martha married Herbert Hedges, and they moved from his family's colonial salt box into a new home on Parsonage Lane in 1906. Ruth and Oliver Osborne built a new house across from Louisa on Main Street in 1912. There is a family story about this hatch on the roof. My grandfather Raymond was a tall, thin, agile man, rarely sick. He lived to the age of 91. Underneath this hatch, inside the attic, a small wooden platform was constructed, a rope hanging ominously nearby. Reportedly, my grandfather would swing on the rope, hook his feet onto the platform, pull himself up, and pop the roof hatch open to look for whales. Raymond was 16 when the last Wayne Scott whale was caught by his father in 1907, and apparently, he was always hoping for another. The Wayne Scott attic held some treasures, an 1899 washing machine made of wood, Richard Barron's helped identify a Dominique Cot bedstead from 1833, and Glenn Purcell and Charles Keller came in and identified three Dominique beds. A flail for thrashing wheat and a flax hackle marked 1834 were also found. My uncle David said the grapes on this arbor are one of the oldest plants in Wayne Scott, coming from the 1675 salt box that stood right in front of the arbor. This 1901 New York Historical Society photo seems to show a grape arbor behind the salt box. Jelly has been made from these concord grapes for generations. The remains of the well to the old salt box is under this arbor. This small house, we call the playhouse. My father, Charles, and his brother David grew potatoes from Bridgehampton to Amagansett. They farmed a field on Further Lane. This building reportedly housed a family of four working on a Further Lane estate. It was one room with no electricity or running water. At some point, there was a fire in it, and the estate owner wanted the building removed. The building was moved to Wayne Scott to serve as a playhouse for the growing number of grandchildren that would come to visit. It has hardwood floors, plaster walls, and a built-in cabinet on which we stored our children's tea set. The Osborne barn originally stood to the east of the farmhouse. This is the earliest photo of the barn taken in 1891. We do not know how old the barn is. Amy Osborne Bassford and her remembrances estimated it was built in 1816. Other guesses are as early as the 1700s. It will be interesting to see if in the future, a true date can be determined by studying the timbers. Thomas Osborne, pictured here with his 1862 U.S. Internal Revenue License to be a stallion keeper. He raised horses. My uncle Bob once told me Thomas raised horses in this barn to send to support the Civil War effort. In 1926, the barn was moved by Cheryl Hedges to its current location. Cheryl Hedges created a spacious apartment for his family of seven on the second floor. The apartment featured four bedrooms, a large living room, a dining room, a kitchen, and a single bathroom. The family is pictured here with the Wayne Scott School visible in the background. On the first floor, Cheryl ran a garage business repairing cars and tractors. Unfortunately, the Hedges family fortunes declined during the Great Depression, and within a few years, they relocated to Arkansas. Cheryl's son, William D. Hedges, later wrote a biography recounting his childhood in the Wayne Scott barn. He finally remembered the modern bathroom his father had installed there, especially since his new house in Arkansas had only indoor, outdoor plumbing. Many of the timber beams and cross supports are still visible in the barn. This is an interior view of the garage. Ernest Field worked on the Osborne farm and lived in the Wayne Scott Garage apartment for many years after becoming widowed at a young age. Each room in the apartment has a door. A long hallway runs down the center of the building. The wood stove was in the kitchen. Doors would be opened and closed to direct heat to the place where it was most needed. On dark winter nights, it's said that you could walk down Main Street and see a single light shining from the garage kitchen window. Through it, you'd find Ernest sitting at the table, reading his newspaper in the warmth of the wood stove. Over the years, the barn wasn't just home to farmhands. It was also rented out to various artists. One artist installed lights in the spacious attic to display their work. Another, as I recently learned, requested a large wall on the first floor to hang canvases. Interestingly, the large white wall you see here was reportedly installed by Frank Serpico. Serpico was a New York police detective famous for exposing widespread police corruption. He went into hiding after an attempt on his life, reportedly living in this area, and at the time, assisting this artist in constructing this wall. Serpico's story inspired the 1973 film Serpico, starring Al Pacino in the lead role. The barn has two sliding doors. In my lifetime, farm equipment and tractors were stored and serviced on the first floor. A water spout extended from the front of the building to fill the potato sprayer. In the attic is evidence of a long-ago hayhook and tracks to haul heavy bales of hay into the upper loft. The front was dirt, not grass, from all the tractor traffic. Two Gulf brand gas pumps stood near where the electric boxes are today. The farm tractors and trucks were filled with gas here, as was our family station wagon. And from what I have only recently learned, apparently, every teenager in Wayne Scott snuck over to fill their cars' gas tanks, too, back when gas was 35 cents a gallon. In the 1920s and 30s, different folks rented the garage to run it as a service station and repair shop. But once the family potato business was well underway, the apartment was used for farm workers and the garage for farm tractor repairs. My cousin recalls excitedly running over after the Wayne Scott School was let out to meet his father and uncle and work on tractors with the wood stove going on winter days. There are two staircases that lead to the apartment, one from the porch and back, and one from inside the garage. The view from the second floor of the garage is stunning. My Aunt Ruth, who was raised in the farmhouse, and her family summered here in the barn apartment for over 20 years. Every year, cousin Donald arrived with the latest Estes rocket for our annual rocket launch in the Wayne Scott Fields. There were treasures to be found in the garage as well, an old hay fork, multiple sickles, and pitchforks. Louisa's granddaughter, Amy Hunter, wrote, "Of all the houses she has lived in, her favorite view was from the small window at the top of the farmhouse stairs, where, when life was still, the view was like a 19th-century landscape painting. When she looked across the long front yard to the street, she could watch the comings and goings of the still tiny farming village. Boys headed up the hill to pick up the mail, chatting girls strolling by, a neighbor in their porch hammock, her aunt across the street busy baking a coconut cake, a farmer stopping his truck in the middle of the road to talk to a neighbor with no threat of oncoming traffic." She wrote, "She would sit with her elbow on the windowsill and dream of Wayne Scott, where her family had lived for nearly 300 years, wrestling a living from its fertile soil and occasionally turbulent sea. Our family is thrilled this slice of Wayne Scott's history will be preserved for future generations." Thank you.
Hillary, that was extraordinary. Would you be willing to, I mean, we have the PowerPoint with all the visuals, but you obviously have a narrative. Would you be willing to share that with us, that we could post that on the website as well? That would be great.
Thank you.
That was great. Your, yeah, I mean, your thing.
I think that said it all.
Yeah, for sure. Carol, is there anyone signed up for public comment? No? Would anyone like to address the board? Carolyn? Esperanza?
Welcome, Esperanza. Good evening. Hold one moment. I'm so captivated by that, all that history. I'm just, I keep learning from Hillary. It's amazing. I'm Esperanza Leon. I'm here representing Wayne Scott Heritage Project, and I have a statement from our organization. "The Board of Directors of Wayne Scott Heritage Project would like to reiterate how pleased we are at the prospect of public acquisition of 66 Wayne Scott Main Street using the Community Preservation Fund. The Town Board has Wayne Scott Heritage Project's unequivocal support for this purchase. The acquisition of this property secures an incomparable vista on the East End that extends across old farm fields and meadows, wetlands, and a coastal pond, ending in sand dunes and the ocean beyond. The view shed is remarkable not only for its aesthetic merits, it also embodies the historic agrarian character of this hamlet settled in 1668. The distinction of this area as a scenic area of statewide significance in 2010 is a testament to its cultural value. We arrive at the subject of today's hearing, which is the preservation of historic structures on this property. This acquisition will ensure the preservation of the Louisa Edwards Osborne House of 1904, a family residence and sometimes summer boarding house, and the adjacent Osborne Hedges Garage, also dating to the early 1900s, and according, as you've just heard, to the recent assessment by Zachary Student Roth and Hillary's narrative, it may retain parts of an original, perhaps 18th-century barn. Both structures were included in the 1990 survey of historic and architectural resources prepared by Robert Hefner. The report states, "The property is the only parcel remaining in historic Wayne Scott in which the dwelling is not divided from the farmland. It is key to the integrity of the district." According in this, in his narrative from Hefner, recalling its agrarian past. Mr. Student Roth's assessment also includes a third structure on the property, a small accessory building that we've just also looked at, dating to the early to mid 20th century, perhaps. I didn't know its use as a tenant, farm tenant housing, which is very similar to our founding purpose with the Little House on Wayne Scott Hollow Road, so that's clearly to me a significance and for our organization, a significant feature. So that third structure, his report, Student Roth's report indicates, while its original function is as yet undocumented, but we've just heard that, it remains a contributing feature, and this is more important, a contributing feature on the farmstead and deserving of preservation. Wayne Scott Heritage Project strongly encourages the Town Board to designate the entirety of the John Osborne Homestead a historic landmark, inclusive of the three extent structures and surrounding 30 acres. The fields surrounding Wayne Scott Pond comprise a cultural landscape that is a significant feature of the site and integral to the historic designation. One can say that the farm goes with the farmhouse. The land and the buildings go together and contribute to the historic meaning of the site. As comparable examples, we have the nearby, nearby on Wayne Scott Hollow Road, the Thomas Strong House and land listed on the state and national registers. Designated more recently by the Town of East Hampton, the Carl Fisher House property in Montauk is landmarked as a whole, as is the Julius D. Parsons Homestead in Springs, the latter being a very similar CPF purchase to the Osborne Homestead. After saving the Little House on Wayne Scott Hollow Road from demolition, our organization incorporated in 2021 to preserve the history and cultural character of Wayne Scott by protecting its historic structures and significant view sheds. Wayne Scott Heritage Project views the acquisition of 66 Wayne Scott Main Street as a cornerstone in the eventual establishment of a Wayne Scott Historic District, for which we are currently undertaking a cultural resource survey. This acquisition aligns fully with our mission, and recognizing that this entails an unprecedented commitment of funds, we commit to partnering, partnering with the town in the fulfillment of this mission. We look forward to being a part of management and stewardship, stewardship of this landmarked property. We envision this property as a site to rebuild the Little House and be able to feature and interpret the history and heritage of Wayne Scott through all of these buildings and their surrounding landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Esperanza. Would anyone else like to, Carolyn?
Wayne Scott Heritage Project is so excited that we just can't like be one voice. So you'll have to just pardon me. My name is Carolyn Logan-Glock, and I'm the cosecretary of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project and a Wayne Scott resident, and would like to make the following statement. So at the public hearing, the last public hearing, it was so heartwarming to witness the outpouring of support for the Town Board's most dramatic use of the CPF ever, in order to acquire the property located at 66 Wayne Scott Main Street, and now to be known as the John Osborne Homestead Historic Landmark. Not only do Wayne Scott residents eloquently stand by the Town Board's bold move, but those living in other hamlets stood as well. Acquisition of the parcel will be a game changer, securing one of the most iconic view sheds in the Town of East Hampton for all to enjoy, while securing health and access to one of its very significant coastal ponds. The articles of incorporation for Wayne Scott Heritage Project state the following, and Esperanza quoted them in part, "The corporation is formed to preserve the history and cultural character of Wayne Scott by protecting its historic structures and significant view sheds, and to encourage programs that foster and maintain an appreciation for the hamlets' traditions and sense of community." So you see, this is a dream come true. However, Wayne Scott Heritage Project was disturbed to hear the Town Board decide to designate only the two most sizable built structures be designated historic. We urged the Town Board to reconsider and designate the entire parcel, the land and all the existing structures as historic. We have consulted a number of preservationists who recommend the same, and note that the Thomas Strong House is listed on the national and state registers, not just as a house, but as a house standing on a specific parcel. There, the farm goes with the farmhouse, and the farmhouse with the farm, as you've heard before. They go together, are indivisible, and compose the historic meaning of the site. In addition, Sac Student Roth's excellent structural report, which was commissioned by you, not only evaluates the existing Louisa Edwards Osborne House and adjacent barn garage as significant historical structures worthy of preservation, it also indicates the nearby playhouse may have architectural and historic interest as well. Thus, WHP strongly urges the Town Board to revise the historic designation to include not merely the two main, most visible existing structures, but the entire property itself. A barn is not a barn without farmland on which to stand, even if it has been repurposed as a garage. Finally, Wayne Scott Heritage Project notes that designation of the entire parcel as historic will be a linchpin in the securing of Wayne Scott's historic center. This will be the locus for all to appreciate as a tangible and valued locus for that which this community values, its bounty and its beauty and its symbiotic coexistence with mankind. Help us to expand the four pillars upon which Wayne Scott stands. That would be the chapel, the schoolhouse, the cemetery, and the general store, to include not only the built environment, but also the setting upon which it rests. And one day, we hope, this property may become home to our Little House, which is living right out there. I just wanted to add, on a personal note, I'm acquaintance with a man by the name of Gran Nixon, and he was dean of the New York Studio School for many, many years before retiring, and he's currently struggling with ill health. He rented the garage barn for a number of summers, and when it was communicated to him that the town was going to do this, he was overjoyed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jane?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. I'm Jane Mearing. I'm a Wayne Scott-loving Amagansett resident, and I'm also honored to have very recently been asked, and I have joined the Board of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project. So I'm very excited about working with these incredible people towards the goals. So I'm not going to repeat what they said, but I also wanted to reiterate, you know, you're giving us so much with, yeah.
You're speaking on behalf of yourself and not on behalf of any other regulatory board.
Oh, sure. I mean, that's why, I'm sorry. I identify myself as an individual citizen. So I'm Jane Mearing, and I'm speaking as an individual citizen and a part of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project. Thank you for the reminder. So I was listening to the work session the day that you were reading the resolution for the, for the notice of public hearing, and I was a little taken aback when I heard you make the edit, right, saying that the, the designation, the local designation was being, when these words narrowed, to the two structures rather than all of the structures and the site. So I did want to just come and reiterate the strong desire to see the local historic designation put over all three of the structures. Won't reiterate what we have read in the Student Roth report and what we heard this evening about that structure, but also, I just, you know, wanted to go back and read that very interesting sentence again. The report states clearly that the property is the only parcel remaining in historic Wayne Scott in which the dwelling is not divided from the farm. Scott in which the dwelling is not divided from the farmland. And I just think that's such an important concept. I was inspired by some recent designations at the Parsons property, Carl Fisher House, where you've done that. So the precedent is there, and I just wanted to really stress that that is the ultimate, I think, value coming out of the way this can be protected for the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Would anyone else like to address the board? Matthew, is there anyone on the line for this public hearing?
Yes, we have one caller on the line. I'll put him through.
Good evening, town board. This is David Buda. As someone who's not intimately involved in Wayne Scott matters, but I, as a close follower of town board matters, I would like to ask if perhaps a member of the town board and/or Scott could please clarify why the town made that edit in the hearing notice and exempted from the historic designation the agricultural land? I assume there was a good reason for doing that, although the last three speakers have questioned whether that was a wise move. So if someone could please explain what's going on, why there was any hesitation with including the agricultural land within this historic designation, and why that seems to be a point of contention between those people who are very much involved in the preservation of Wayne Scott and the town board, which has the same motivation, but there is that distinction between them that, I don't know if it's really a distinction or a difference, but perhaps someone, Scott, I guess is the best one qualified to do so, could explain what's going on. Thank you.
This is a public comment, David. I will make my intentions known during the discussion if this comes to a resolution to approve.
Matthew, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no additional callers at this time.
Do you have a motion opposed?
Motion opposed.
Second.
Aye.
Carol, if you could read the second hearing notice, please.
Notice hereby given that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town Hall 159 Pinnacle Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, December 5th at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard, to consider comments of all persons regarding the amendments to the East Hampton Town Code, Chapters 45 and 255, Ordinance Enforcement Department and zoning of the East Hampton Town Code, an abstract which follows, "A local law amending Chapters 45 and 255, Ordinance Enforcement Department and zoning regulating placing, storing, and parking of modular homes. The full text of the local law is available for inspection in the office of the town clerk, 159 Pinnacle Road, East Hampton during regular business hours."
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on this public hearing? Please.
Welcome.
Say good evening to the town board. My name is Steve Kibroski. I live in East Hampton. I only recently was able to apply for the permit process for the modular storage. I've been working on these then with modular homes for 31 years, and I've been working out of town. So this is the first application I made, and I currently have a house coming January 9th at 799 Hans Creek Road. And when I did the application, I applied for the Hans Creek launching ramp, because it's only about 600 feet from my site. I was then contacted by Kevin Cooper, the gentleman, it's, he's been very good as far as working, you know, and finding spots to store boxes and everything. And he had mentioned me storing the boxes at Abraham's Path at the ball field. So I told him, I said, "Well, that's six and a half miles from the site. I'd be crossing three, every main artery in East Hampton at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning during the week." And, I mean, I don't know, we've all seen that traffic in that area, and not to mention the school buses, you know? So, but apparently, you know, for whatever reason, this law is restricting to where it can go. I would like to ask the board to open it up and leave it to Kevin to inspect the site and work with the builder and get the approval maybe that way, instead of just saying, "Oh, we're just going to go here and that's it," you know? Because it, you know, it's, it's the distance getting to the site, you know? I mean, we try to keep the traffic down and make as less impact as possible, because we realize this is a pretty large structure going down the road at that hour of the morning, you know? So that's the only thing I'd like to see is just, you know, let's take each application and say, hey, I'll mention a site, maybe he can, he recommends the site, or, and work it out together, instead of just saying, okay, everything in East Hampton has to come out of the ball field, everything in Montauk has to come out of Kirk Park. I mean, I've stored boxes in every nook and cranny in this town, okay? There's spots that he probably doesn't even know about yet. So if you would, I would, I'd appreciate you, you know, being a little more flexible with that and maybe just entrusting him to that decision. So, all right?
All right.
Thanks so much.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line at this time.
Motion opposed.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Okay. So now we're up to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Matthew, is there anyone else on the line that would like to speak during public comment?
Yes, we have a caller. I'll put him through.
Thank you.
Good evening again, town board. This is David Buda. I assume you can hear me clearly.
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'd like to comment on two of the resolutions that are on tonight's agenda. The first one is Resolution 1492 concerning the town retaining at its own expense urban renewal mediator, and that would be one particular attorney at the rate of $400 per hour. Those of you who are not that familiar with the town code provisions for mediation when there are two different owners of portions of a buildable lot that are required to be merged under the urban renewal map plan, that person is referred to as the administrator, and the definition of the administrator suggests that, under most circumstances, a town employee, including the town attorney, is the one who would be the one who is, conducts any mediation that's required in order to effectuate a meeting of the minds so as the two people can resolve their difference. Yes, the administrator could be a special counsel, but I have to wonder whether or not you have even solicited proposals from, from the universe of attorneys in the, in East Hampton. It seems to me that a $400 per hour rate that is paid by the town, not by the parties involved, is exorbitant and perhaps unnecessary, and I'd like to know whether or not, in fact, you have solicited proposals and received multiple proposals, and why this seems to be the only one that was received and solicited. Hold on a second, let me just moot this. All right, so that's what I have to say about that. The second one that I'd like to mention briefly is your Resolution 1488, which is a post-public hearing resolution to decide, and the matter that was before the town board on November the 7th, when I was not in town, and I did submit written public comment, there seems to be some inability of the record to reflect the fact that there was public comment submitted. I trust that you have all received it and read it and considered it. I'm not aware that you have discussed this matter at a public, at a work session or at any other time. I might have missed that if you did, but it would be appropriate and heartening to have a resolution at least acknowledge that the public hearing did engender a public comment that was submitted, and that hopefully you considered it. What you are proposing to do to resolve a particular issue, to reduce, further reduce a requirement under the urban renewal plan for the scenic easement, which was once, at one time 50 feet and was then reduced to 25, you're now proposing to release, reduce that to 11 feet, which is an odd number for sure. And as I explained in the submission, there is an alternative to how this matter can be resolved to everyone's satisfaction, and that simply is to acknowledge the fact that when you accept a scenic easement at a particular point in time, existing structures are obviously not affected retroactively, but they are pre-existing non-conforming. So that's all the time I have, and I appreciate you taking this call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew, anyone else on the line?
We have no additional callers.
So we're going to move on to resolutions. Tom, you want to start us off, please?
Resolution 2024-1476 is a warrant approval for claims on warrant number 12A in the amount of $65,501,127.25, and for $41,167.10. Were ordered by town board and supervisor hereby directed to pay same. Second.
All in favor. Aye. Can I just say that is the largest warrant, we believe, in the town's history?
There you go.
And it's because it includes the purchase of the lot of property on Wayne Scott Main Street.
It's a large number to say. 1477 is bids to notice. This notice bid is for bid EH24051. This is for food service and kitchenware items. Specifications are available from the purchasing department by emailing purchasing@ehamptonny.gov or by calling 631-324-4183. Bids are available, sorry, packets are available as of Thursday, December 5th, 2024, and they are due to the town December 19th, 2024 at 3:00 PM. Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 1478 is for a bid rejection. We're rejecting bid EH24043 for food service and miscellaneous food items. Second.
All in favor.
1479, donation of vehicles to the Montauk Fire Department. Whereas Montauk Fire Department is conducting trading, it's requested donations of vehicles to be used for such purposes. Whereas in response to request, Town of East Hampton has agreed to nominate the following decommissioned vehicles, 2010 Ford Fusion SE, a 2014 Ford Explorer XLT, a 2015 Ford Police and Septo sedan base. Now may be resolved, the town board has agreed to this donation and title documentation necessary to facilitate the donation shall be executed by the town supervisor. Second.
All in favor.
I'd like to move from discussion quickly on this one.
Okay, sure.
I've actually worked with the guys who do the vehicle extrication for this. It's an amazing team. They've won numerous international awards, and having these vehicles to practice on is an incredible experience. When you're on EMT, you're actually in a car, and they're cutting up, and you have a saw going next to your helmet, it's a terrifying experience, and to be able to train in that kind of environment is huge. So thank you to the town for doing this, and also thank you to the heavy rescue team who actually perform this function. Agreed.
So all in favor.
Aye. 1480, as to amend Resolution 2024-747, to extend contract EH23024 for Fort Hill Cemetery Interments and Maintenance Contract. Whereas the town accepted the bid of Peter Joyce Seaside Landscaping and Parks and Engineering Agreement, is renewable upon agreement of the parties for three additional one-year terms per Resolution 2023-896, and extended the contract per Resolution 2024-747, but the amount for the contract year 2024-2025 was mistakenly stated, therefore now be it resolved that the contract extension for EH23024, amending Resolution 2024-747, is accepted at the annual cost of $2,273.83 per month, not to exceed $27,286 per year for the Fort Hill Cemetery Interments and Maintenance Contract fees. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm happy to present Resolution 2024-1481. This is septic proposal from Franklin Bronze Plax in the amount of $356.20.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1482 is a notice of bidders for EH24-047 for the purchase and installation of a new fire pump on marine vessel. This is a rebid, is available December 5th, 2024. The bid is due back in December 19th, 2024. Please contact the town's purchasing department at 631-324-4183 for further information.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Like to make a motion, withdraw Resolution 1483.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1484 is a sep bid EH24-035. This is for the Gan Road Guard Rail replacement to PSL Industries Incorporated. The total cost of this amount would be for $63,925.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1485 is to retain L.K. McLean Associates for professional and engineering services for the land, build a exterior stair replacement, and we had a proposal from May 14, 2024, the amount of $9,720.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1486 is retain L.K. McLean Associates for the professional engineering services for Terry King Comfort Station. This is a supplemental fee for $38,000 for comfort station and retrofitting of the storage building.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. 1487 is the field management plan authorized in the resolution where the town board had a public hearing November 21st, 2024, for the proposed field management plan located 265 Montauk Highway.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 1488. This is to amend UR map EH-7, URP 65, and this is where as the town board held a public hearing on November 7th to consider a modification to the urban renewal plan to reduce the width of the required scenic easement along Middle Highway for urban renewal parcel number 65 from 25 feet to 11 feet due to the impact the required 25-foot easement would have upon the buildability of this lot. Whereas the town's consulting engineer reviewed the proposal and found that a reduction of the required scenic easement would be appropriate and more conforming to the existing site conditions for this property, and the engineer has recommended, sorry, the approval of the modification, whereas the town planning board reviewed the proposed amendment to the urban renewal plan and indicated that the planning board has no objection to the modification, as the reduced easement would still preserve existing conditions on the lot, which was developed without the easement having been provided previously, and would preserve the existing vegetation as it exists and appears to have existed for a considerable amount of time. Whereas the proposed modification of the access is an unlisted action pursuant to SEQA, whereas the town board has reviewed the environmental assessment form and agrees with the conclusion set therein, whereas the town board finds a proposed modification to be appropriate and in keeping with the urban renewal plans in which it is located. Now be it resolved, the town board hereby adopts a negative declaration pursuant to Chapter 128 of Town Code and provisions of SEQA. Resolve that the town board hereby approves the proposed modification as follows, urban renewal map EH-7, urban renewal parcel 65, modify the requirement of a 25-foot scenic easement to an 11-foot scenic easement for the urban renewal parcel number 65 along said parcel's frontage on Middle Highway, as shown on sketch, proposed old field map study map number 265, Section 3, Montauk Manor, EH-7. Except as amended above, the requirements of the urban renewal map EH-7 shall remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay.
So this was discussed, we had a work session, maybe not a topic on there, but it was discussed in the work session. We did receive public, public comments through written information that is in the written record on there. As I previously discussed at that work session, I, I don't support reducing an already reduced scenic easement on this property. I think it's a very bad precedent that the town board could be setting. The 14-foot relief on this is an additional 1,820 square feet of property, which can add potential another 182 added square feet of GFA to the property as the law currently stands right now. Also on this property, there was already an abandoned UR road, half of that UR road onto, which was Riker Avenue at the time, that was 20 feet by 136 feet. So that also brought another 272 feet of GFA. So this property has already seen multiple occasions in which they've been granted greater relief than other properties in the town, properties in the township of the neighboring area. The property owner at the time that these, that the, that the improvements were made in the scenic easement was notified of this over 10 years ago. And right now, I don't think this is an appropriate way to try to move forward with actually trying to cure this, this, this subject, because it sets the town in a bad precedent if we find this in other locations where people, where individuals have actually built in a scenic easement, come back and ask for the scenic easement to be reduced. Here, I think there's other ways to move a parking lot to a conforming location, in my humble opinion. my humble opinion. That's all I have to say.
Well, I seconded already, right? So, no, you introduced it. I introduced, right? Day, uh, oh.
Yeah, I, I, I under- I understand David's position for sure, and I think it's a, it's a healthy conversation. Um, and I understand the caller's point about, you know, a, a different solution, but I, I still support the resolution.
So we need to do a roll call, Carol? Please?
Aye.
Next.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, just let me, I'm just going to write that down. Um, Resolution fourteen eighty-nine, uh, this is to accept grant of scenic and conservation easement, uh, seventy-three Mako Lane in Amagansett. A public hearing was held by the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton on November twenty-first on the proposed grant of a scenic and conservation easement, resolved that the town hereby accepts the easement listed below. The grantor is Gabrielle Eichler and, uh, Douglas Newton. It's a scenic and conservation easement dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four, located at seventy-three Mako Lane, Amagansett, tax debt number three hundred dash one seventy-five dash six dash thirty-four point one, and the reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety is a fund source change for the Wayne Scott Commercial Center. This is where it has been determined that there are certain invoices which cannot be paid via the escrow account implemented pursuant to Resolution twenty twenty dash eight forty-nine, resolved that the town authorizes outstanding invoices from twenty twenty-four through the end of the fiscal year to Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah, L L P, to be paid from the appropriate budget account in amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Fourteen ninety-one is to approve employee reimbursement, and this is resolved, the Town Board hereby approves the reimbursement of two purchases from twenty twenty-three to the Director of Code Enforcement for a total amount of one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-two is to retain counsel for urban renewal, um, mediations pursuant to the town's revised urban renewal law. The town is required to mediate between various property owners who own portions of an urban renewal lot and are attempting to assemble a full buildable parcel, resolved that Brian Lester Esquire of the law firm Tarbit and Lester shall be compensated for such, uh, services as a mediator at the rate of four hundred dollars per hour as outlined in his proposal dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-three, approve one point, one-time payment, Accurate Court Reporting Services, Inc., resolved that the Town Board approves a one-time payment, which has also been approved by Town Justice Stephen Tokolsky, to Accurate Court Reporting, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five dollars, fifty cents for, uh, above reference of physical, of professional services.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-four, this is the schedule of public hearing and notice of public hearing, first-time homebuyer down payment assistance for Christopher and Haley Chinquey in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the public hearing is to be held at Town Hall Main Meeting Room, one fifty-nine Panago Road, East Hampton on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, Resolution fourteen ninety-five, this is the schedule of public hearing and notice of public hearing for first-time homebuyer down payment assistance, Robin Soda, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and the public hearing is to be held at Town Hall Main Meeting Room, one fifty-nine Panago Road, East Hampton on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-six, this is the schedule of public hearing and notice of public hearing for first-time homebuyer down payment assistance, David Gaviola, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, public hearing is to be held at Town Hall Main Meeting Room, one fifty-nine Panago Road, East Hampton on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, or soon thereafter, this, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Have to say, these are very heartwarming.
It is, yes.
Young people in our community to be able to purchase a home here and.
Yes, a good series of.
We're able to assist them.
Good series of resolutions. Um, Resolution fourteen ninety-seven, notice of public hearing, uh, for C H F Project Funding Award, East Hampton Housing Authority, one fourteen, uh, Middle Income Project. The amount requested is one point five million dollars, and the public hearing is to be held in December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-eight, this is notice of a public hearing, C H F Project Funding Award, Willbone Apartments Renovation Project. The amount requested is three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and this public hearing will also be held in December nineteenth, uh, one fifty-nine Panago Road at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen ninety-nine, this is notice of public hearing for C H F Project Funding Award, East Hampton Housing Authority, The Cottages. Uh, this is a grant request in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, and the public hearing is to be held in December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
Aye.
Resolution fifteen hundred, notice of, um, public hearing, C H F Project Funding Award, Windmill One Expansion, uh, amount requested is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars as a loan. This public hearing is also to be held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the main meeting room at Town Hall, um, or at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fifteen oh one, notice of public hearing, C H F Project Funding Award, The Green at Gardner Point. Um, this is a request for one million dollar, uh, grants, uh, and, and actually that might technically be a loan depending on the final terms after speaking, um, but we will work out those details at, at the public hearing or, or shortly after. This public hearing will be held in December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, or soon thereafter, this matter may be heard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, Resolution fifteen oh two, this is a budget modification for the town clerk, uh, moving, uh, money from printing code books in the amount of three thousand dollars and moving to office expense in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution fifteen oh three, to extend agreement, R F P, number EH twenty twenty-four one oh one, this is professional management services for Camp Hero Wastewater System, uh, the award going to C M J Graywater, uh, to be effective from January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, and the payments are as followed: For tasks one through three, a total fixed price of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars, and for task four, services will be provided in one, on a time and expense basis according to the submitted proposal schedule upon approval from the town.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen oh four, and it's to appoint part-time office assistant Catherine LaFave in the tax receivers office at the hourly rate of twenty-three dollars and ten cents, effective December ninth through January seventeenth. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen oh five is to appoint Board of Assessment Review Member Bob Davis for a five-year term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, effective retroactive to October first. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen oh six is a uniform reimbursement for Police Officer Nicholas Kotchistan, and this is.
Sorry, go ahead.
For uniforms needed for motorcycle patrol in the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen oh seven is for Police Officer William Hamilton and Michael Rodriguez, uh, for their, for child passenger safety technicians, and this is to be reimbursed for their recertification application in the amount of fifty-five dollars each. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen oh eight is to authorize training, uh, at the Child Safety Technician Conference, and this is for Sergeant Bradley Rozzy, Police Officer Michael Rodriguez, and Police Officer William Hamilton, and this is in an amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen oh nine is to accept proposal EH twenty twenty-four dash, uh, one-one-one for Airport and Aviation Engineering Consulting Services, and this is for Johnson, Kukata, and Lucesi, and this is, uh, to begin, uh, January of next year. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen-ten is a renewal agreement with Vector Airport Systems for professional services, and this is to provide full service, landing fee billing and collection management services, uh, fully integrated noise and operations monitoring system, and to upgrade the equipment. And this is at fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars per annum for the landing fee and billing collection management services, plus the sum of thirteen percent of landing fees collected, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per annum for Vector Noise and Operations Monitoring System, and fifteen thousand dollars per annum for flight tracking and equipment maintenance. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen eleven is to amend Resolution twenty twenty-four nine forty-six to retain comm search frequency protection services to assure that the town's emergency communication system operates at its peak efficiency without undue interference. This is at an annual cost to the town of three hundred and fifty dollars per annum for a five-year period at a total expense of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen twelve is a budget modification for Marine Patrol, removing twenty-one hundred dollars from fuel motor vehicles to fuel boats. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Fifteen thirteen is the second amendment to Eltnor Hawkeye LLC License Agreement at East Hampton Airport, and this is for Eltnor Haw- Hawkeye to utilize a portion of the East Hampton Town Airport as a staging area for equipment and material related to P S C G's hurricane and disaster relief, and this is for a five-month term commencing on January first and terminating May thirty-first, with an option to extend on a month-to-month basis at a rent of a dollar per square foot per month for a total sum of four thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars per month. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen fourteen, this is to amend, uh, local law, amending Chapter two fifty-five zoning, whereas the Town Board held a public hearing on November seventh, twenty twenty-four, and, uh, with the written record of the hearing open until November fifteenth to consider a local law entitled, a local law amending Chapter two fifty-five zoning of the East Hampton Town Code in order to amend the following sections: Two fifty-five one twenty, two five eleven ten, two five eleven twenty-three, two five eleven sixty-seven, seventy-two, and seventy-four, and to amend Chapter, uh, one oh two Building Construction, Section, uh, one zero two dash seven, and whereas after considering the proposed local law and the comments received at the time of the hearing, the Town Board believes the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the town, whereas Suffolk County Planning Commission has determined that the proposed legislation is a matter for local determination, and whereas pursuant to the State Quality, uh, State Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, of the Town Code, the town has classified the action as unlisted and issued a negative declaration on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that proposed local law is hereby adopted to read as follows, and the full text is of the law is available online.
Second.
Discussion?
Sure.
So, I, uh, I do feel that this, uh, it is very reasonable, uh, the vast majority of all this. I do believe it fits within the comprehensive plan, specifically Goal one, Goal two, even a little bit of Goal three, and also even portions of Goal seven on there then, too, which is important, which is the cornerstone of the Town, Town Board. Uh, what I do not agree with this in this, uh, but I will be voting yes on the, on the whole resolution, is, uh, changes to Chapter two fifty-five dash eleven dash ten and Chapter two fifty-five dash eleven dash sixty-seven, ten, and those are primarily, uh, limiting the, the house size to ten thousand square feet. We discussed this multiple times now in our work sessions, and that's solely because I think there's a different means to be able to get to, uh, the, a reasonable limitation based on lot size or different valuations on there, but I do understand where the board is moving with that. With that said, I support everything else in here. I'll be voting on the whole, on this resolution as a yes, but just want to make that known again.
Thank you, David.
I, I just have one other comment, um, on, on two fifty-five eleven seventy-four, um, on the basement, um, where the egress shall not extend more than ten feet out, we, we brought this up in a previous work session, too. Um, my concern there is, is that if you have a fifteen-foot ceiling with a seven-foot riser and a nine-foot step, in order to hit that fifteen-foot rise, you need to go out eighteen feet. Um, so that limits your options to having a staircase that's parallel to the house instead of perpendicular, which I, I, I think is unnecessarily harsh, so, um, you know, I, I support overall this piece, and I think it's something we, we might need to look at again in the future, but, um, just want to kind of bring that up again, is that's the point.
Thank you, Tom.